Ms. McGrew, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bill Hastings.
Here.
Mayor Pratam Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Our invitation tonight will be offered by Reverend Dr. Pat Sparks with St. Peter's United Methodist Church. Following that, we will have Captain Brian Wojtek with Katy Police Department. Yes, and the pledge to the U.S. flag and then the Texas flag. Pastor Sparks.
Goodness. Thank you. Let's pray. Let me God, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together as leaders of the great city of Katy. And we'd ask that you would bless each one who are represented here and those they represent. We'd ask that you would bless this meeting and all the deliberations therein, that we would make the decisions that are best for your kingdom, best for this city, and best for what we do to help people in this community. We'd ask that you'd guide every step that we take, for we pray this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Dr. Sparks. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you. You're very welcome. And thank you for all y'all do.
Captain Wojtek.
I please rise for the American pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Wojtek. We will move on to agenda item number three, which is public comments. And I'd like to remind the audience that you will have three minutes to speak. And the comments will be relevant to anything that is not on the agenda. And as you wish to speak, if you would press star nine to raise your hand. And you can state your name and your address. And do we have anybody wishing to speak? Please do so at this time.
Seeing none, Mayor.
Having nobody that wishes to speak, we will move on to item number four. It's comments from the public on any item that is on the agenda. So anyone wishing to participate via telecom, please press star nine to raise your hand. And once again, if you will give your name and your address, we would appreciate it.
Seeing none at this time, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to item number five. And we have a presentation tonight by Garrett Nelson and Taylor Coleman with SWAT Ministries International on human child trafficking.
IT is promoting Taylor now. Taylor, I assure you promoted, but you will have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that, guys.
Not a problem. How are you doing?
I'm doing pretty good, guys. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come to y'all today and speak on this ministry that we have going on. The name of it is called SWAT Ministries International. It's SWAT stands for Spiritual Warriors Against Trafficking. It is an anti-human trafficking ministry that is internationally. We're in six different countries and four different states. As of August, I was accepted to bring SWAT here to Texas and kind of take us the stronghold of this area. A little bit about SWAT itself. It's a nonprofit organization and our mission is to fight in human trafficking across the world. We focus on not only just sex trafficking in a whole, but labor trafficking, child trafficking, and adult trafficking as well. You know, we see there's a lot of focus on different areas throughout the world, and we kind of, kind of hit all of them. What we do specifically worldwide, it's kind of unique based on other operations. We equip frontline operators with the tools and the trainings that they need to go in and actually physically rescue these children, rescue these workers and these women globally. You know, we train people over in Thailand as our main base. Our two owners, they came from Mississippi. They felt called to go over to Thailand, and that's where they are living today. They've adopted a couple of children over there recently with some of our promotion and fundraisers we've done. We've actually bought 10 acres in Thailand to set up kind of a community. We're basically setting up a miniature city for rescue victims to come in so we can teach them how to get back into the real world. A big problem overseas, unlike here in the United, well, it's kind of like in the United States, but a lot of them are sold by their family members. So once they're rescued, they don't have anywhere to go. So what SWAT does is they kind of, they bring them in and we're trying to develop our own little area. And it's kind of a rescue ministry to kind of get them back out in the real world. Here in Texas specifically, we focus on the awareness and prevention tactics. We do do self-defense for kids, women, and survivors as a whole. We bring them in, try to build that confidence. Part of our prevention methods is that we do arm, you know, young adults and children with the proper defense techniques to defend themselves in those situations. We also focus on rescuing. So we have a, we have a rescue ministry as well here in Texas. It's not 100% set up yet. I am working with some rescue, rescue victims and trying to get them back on their feet, give them, get them jobs, get them, you know, resumes built and stuff like that. But as of right now in Texas, we're focusing a lot on the awareness and prevention. One way that I really like to help the prevention is I, is I like to build family events. In the last couple of months, we've, we have hosted two events in the North Houston area, and they're all family oriented, family based. The families can bring their kids out. The reason for that is 90% of human trafficking victims here in Houston are runaways. Out of, out of six runaways, you can guarantee one or two of them are being trafficked at any point in time. So our goal as SWAT is to start the family as a, as a whole, as a, as a community from the young age of the kid. So the time that they get to a teenager, they've been, they've been in that safe hold of that house, and they don't have that, they don't have that feeling of, of, of running away. Unlike a lot, a lot of people think a lot of the trafficking victims are younger, but the average age is between 12 and 14. So with that being said, you know, a big preventative measure for us is building that, that family relationship, giving these families what they need. If there are families that are, you know, less fortunate or, you know, just not in work, we try to provide them with materials to keep that home life safe for them and that, those kids. As long, and, and on top of that is spreading the gospel to them as well, because we are a ministry, so we do put that, that value first. And we feel like that's a big reason why, you know, a lot of these kids, they run, they just feel lost. So real quick, I just wanted to throw out, just in the Houston area, you know, this is a nationwide poll, but they're pretty much a good average. 55% of these victims are women and girls, but that leaves 45% of men and children are men and boys, and people don't really see that. 26% of them are children. Most of the victims here in Houston are right off of Bissonette Road. You know, Harris County, Fort Bend County are two huge hot, hotbeds for human trafficking. So that's why I wanted to bring this to you guys today. I, I am home based in Tomball, so not very far away. I did want to get my face and, and the organization out there, because we would like to partner up with the city of Katy, and maybe not even host event, but be able to come out there and show our support for the city. Try to make it a strong place. A lot of people don't want to, don't want to think it's going on in their communities. But over in Tomball alone, we just had a victim that got picked up and rescued a couple of weeks ago. And we have one that's been missing for eight months, and we're, we're working with their moms right now. We partner up with a lot of nationwide organizations, so it's kind of a big unity event. So what we like to do is just reach out to these cities around. And, you know, obviously, we're all aware of it, but would like to be a part of the community in any way we can. And let you guys know that, that organization's here. We have about 15 other organizations that have had, kind of followed along with us. We do events around Houston. We're, we're doing our third at Christmas time. You know, we just want to, we want to let everybody know that we're here, and we have that support system going here. And really good things are happening in Houston with the human trafficking side. A lot of technology is coming about that human, our human traffic, traffic rescuees are able to use to track these people more often.
Mr. Coleman, if I may, thank you. I think you gave a great presentation, and I definitely have learned a lot more than I got from my Google search on it. But it sounds like the next step for you is really to send more information to my office.
Absolutely.
So that I can disperse it to administration and the council on what, what kind of event you're looking to have, where you're really looking to have it. Because a lot of the area addresses, Katy's not in the city limits, and we can move forward from there.
Sure, absolutely. And like I say, guys, we're here, even if it's not an event wise, if you just want us to come to some of your local events. And we're good with that, too. We just want to do anything that we can to help out the community, Katy, Tomball, any of the areas around these areas that are hotbeds, so.
Very good.
Thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing what you accomplish with this, and we'll be glad to try to help you in any way that we can.
Thanks very much, Mayor.
All right, we will move on to item number six. Presentation of the Katy Business Award by Keep Katy Beautiful to the Pin Oak Plaza at 722 Pin Oak Road, Katy, Texas. And I think we have a presentation by city staff.
Now, I'm here.
We hear you, Jennifer. We just don't see you.
I wonder why.
There you are.
Hi. Okay, hi. How are y'all?
Good.
Great, Jennifer.
Good. And thank y'all for having me today. Keep Katy Beautiful is excited to present the Katy Proud Business Award to Pin Oak Plaza, located at the corner of Pin Oak and Highway Boulevards. The plaza built in the late 1980s is owned by the Camberg family and managed by Don Sawyer. The plaza is the proud home to many local businesses, including Fit and Healthy by HMMC, Bank, and Amber's Designs Fine Jewelry. Recently, under the guidance of Amber Gustafson, owner of Amber's Design, the landscaping and the landscaping of the building was completely recreated. They removed and trimmed trees, as well as added new grass, shrubs, flowering plants, and beautiful potted plants. Additionally, the irrigation system was replaced and landscaping rocks were added where there were not sprinklers. Keep Katy Beautiful would like to thank Pin Oak Plaza for improving a little piece of downtown Katy and helping us keep our city beautiful. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank y'all.
Do we have anybody present from the plaza? I guess not.
I wasn't told if anybody would be joining us to receive the award or not, so I don't know.
Okay, well, I'm sure we'll all stop by and congratulate them at some point.
Thank you all a lot.
Thank you, ma'am. We will move on to item number seven, Proclamations. The first one I have today is from the Office of Mayor, City of Katy, in observance of Veterans Day, November the 11th, 2020. Whereas on Veterans Day, America pauses to honor every great servicemember who has ever served our country. The citizens of the United States live in freedom because of the personal sacrifice made by these who have served and by those now serving in the armed forces. And whereas, under the most demanding of circumstances and the most dangerous corners of this earth, Americans veterans have served with distinction, courage, self-sacrifice, and devotion to our nation and one another. These servicemembers represent the American character at its best. And whereas, on Veterans Day and every day, we celebrate our immeasurable contributions, draw inspirations from their example, and renew our commitment to showing them the fullest support and our gratitude. And whereas, with respect for and in recognition of contributions, our servicemembers have made to the causes of peace and freedom around the world, Congress has provided that November the 11th of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans. And whereas, as we pay tribute to our veterans, we are mindful that no ceremony or parade can ever repay the debt of the men and women who have served with courage while serving our country. Now, therefore, I Bill Hastings, Mayor, do hereby recognize the Veterans Day, November the 11th, 2020, as a day to remember the invaluable contribution of our veterans and urge all residents of City of Katy to take a, to take every opportunity to honor our veterans. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and sealed by the City of Katy to be affixed this 11th day of November, 2020. Signed, Bill Hastings, Mayor. Our next proclamation is. Through the Office of the Mayor, City of.
Mayor. I think Janet has something.
I didn't know how to contact you, Becky. Duran's phone dropped, and he says he needs to be promoted back into the meeting. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
No, anytime. Go ahead. We'll wait just a minute and see if we can get him back online. There he is. This Office of the Mayor, City of Katy, Texas proclamation affirming the month of November 2020 as National American Indian Heritage Month. Where the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly, has been significantly influenced by American Indians and the indigenous people. And whereas, the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of this American nation today. And whereas, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas, Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded to Congress approved by George Bush in August of 1990, designated in the month of November as American, National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of American, National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now, therefore, I Bill Hastings, by virtue of the authority vested me as Mayor of City of Katy, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 as National American Indian Heritage Month, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of City of Katy to be affixed this 9th day of November. Hey, at this time, we will move on to item number seven, or number eight, which is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the entire consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to item number nine, Consider a Resolution. Consider a Resolution 9A, Consider a Resolution Awarding Bid for Wastewater Treatment Plant Unit 3B to B5 Construction Incorporated, Magnolia, Texas, in the amount of $2,493,656. Total project costs are $2,992,386. This includes contract bid amount contingencies, engineering, and inspection. Bids were received on October 28, 2020, and this is to be funded by the 2019 Wastewater Treatment Plan Bond. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
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 Second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question. I want to verify that we're continuing to do something. At one point, when I was first on council, we were giving incentives and penalties to, on contracts for contractors to visit, to finish on time or penalties if they ran too far over. Are we still doing that, or was that only for drainage projects?
I will refer that one to Andy or Byron.
So Janet, I don't believe we have in, in the wastewater treatment or drainage. But we did, we did have it on drainage, but not on water and wastewater.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to item number 10.
9B.
Oh, 9B, I'm sorry. Consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds, Series 2020, by Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 163, not to exceed $1,710,000. And this was for Avalon at Spring Green. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 9C, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Unlimited Tax Road Bonds. Excuse me. Series 2028 by Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 163, not to exceed $2,200,000. This is also at Avalon at Spring Greens. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 9D, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign an Agreement with Civic+ for Agenda and Packet, Package, Packet Management Software Licenses. And this is to be funded by the CARES Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. Becky, I appreciate you having that demo set up for us. Are, and are you, you're comfortable that this is going to interact with the Swagit camera software?
Yes, actually, I remember asking in the demo, and they gave us an example there. I believe the city of Abilene uses it directly in the same regard, but I also called just to verify that I wasn't remembering incorrectly. And Kayla was able to verify me, our Civic Plus rep, that we will be able to upload the file from Swagit. And as I'm doing my minutes, I will be able to video tag that recording and push it out to the web.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 10, Consider an Ordinance Adding No Parking Signs to the East and West Sides of Peterson Road between the South Right-of-Way of Highway 90 and the North Right-of-Way of Interstate 10. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption on this?
An ordinance amending Chapter 12 Traffic and Vehicles of the City of Katy Code of Ordinances and amending Article 12.05 Parking Restrictions on Specific Streets by amending Section 12.05.041 No Parking Zones to prohibit parking on the east and west sides of Peterson Road from the south right-of-way of Highway 90 to the north right-of-way of Interstate 10, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for separability, and providing for a penalty not to exceed $200 for a violation of this ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Or is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to council members' reports, and I'm just going to go from left to right on my screen. Councilmember Court.
Um, there's a lot happened in the last week, but I'm going to focus on just a few things. Over the weekend, I was tagged in a post about animal control. So I went and I had a nice visit with the animal control and toured the facility. And so just a couple of things that I learned, there are only two full-time and one part-time employee there. They had to completely redo the facility after Harvey, and I was so impressed with it. It's so clean. They've got so many pens. They, they really are doing an incredible job. One of the things that they do, which I think is of most interest to our residents, is that they, they hold, they hold the animals as long as, as long as they can, because they're taking into consideration that somebody may be on a two-week vacation, and so they can hold those animals. Now, they also partner with Rescue, so 501(c)(3) organizations that are rescue, animal rescues. And so that if these animals aren't playing, they, they adopt them out to those animal rescue. So nearly 100% of their animals are adopted out to rescue facilities. And the only time they will euthanize is if the animal is, is sick or has a bad temperament for some reason. They're not adoptable, and no, no other facility will take them. So I think that's really admirable, that they, they really work hard to get these animals out where they can be adopted. The other thing I want to talk about is we're coming up to Thanksgiving. This year, everybody has been hit really hard. There's a lot of needs out there. There's lots of great local charities that could use help at this time. You've got Hope Impacts, Quot by Faith. There's John Murray Ministries. There's also Katie Christian Ministries coming up on Thanksgiving. They're going to be in need of turkeys and hams and canned goods. And their donation hours are Monday through Thursday, between 8:30 in the morning and 5:00 PM. So every dollar helps. If you can give a dollar, if you can give more, whatever you can do, let's help out this local charities. And I will pass it on to somebody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Janet. Councilman Carroll.
I have no report. Thank you.
All right. Duran?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. My report is going to be short. I, like Janet, would, would like to commend the Humane Department. They're kind of a, left in the background. They do a wonderful, wonderful job. David has for many, many years. He's got an excellent staff that works for him. And I have watched him find homes to the point where I don't take his phone calls anymore, because he's always got some cute puppy that needs a home. But he, he's a wonderful guy. But he, he's a wonderful guy. He is perfect for this job. He was an excellent dispatcher when he was with the police department and now he's an excellent humane department head. So congratulations, David, and all your staff. I get a lot of comments on you. Other than that.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor, if I may interrupt you, Mayor. Councilmember Harris, you didn't call him then.
You skipped Chris.
Did you skip Councilmember Harris?
No, my screen changed and I hadn't got to him yet.
Oh, okay.
Your heart, I was just seeing if you were alive and well and actually.
Yeah, they stopped the snoring. I stopped snoring a little while ago, so.
Okay. Well, you're always so great at helping me and I appreciate your heart. Councilman Harris.
Thank you. Just real quick, just three new police officers were sworn in this morning at the Katy PD, Deodric Gates, Colton Walker, and Eduardo Herrera. So we welcomed them onboard, welcomed them to Katy PD. Thank you for serving.
Well, Chris, usually the mayor's reports, the end, you get to be, I guess, Mayor Pro Tim.
Pro Tim, yeah.
Trumped me tonight. That was all the report I had. I hope everybody has a wonderful, wonderful rest of the week. And I don't know that we'll meet again before, well, yes, we will before Thanksgiving. But anyway, y'all have a, no, we won't?
Seventeen.
And it's the election.
So I will see you all then. Have a wonderful week and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
To adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Meeting is adjourned at 4:34. Thank you, everybody.